So to set the stage for what we're doing today. So we're looking at the sewer hookup project. And just a brief overview of why was this project initiated in the first place? It was initiated by St. John's River Water Management District, DEP, Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program, Volusia County, Oak Hill and others, due to environmental impacts of existing septic systems, Basin Management Action Plan compliance, and Reasonable Assurance Plan recommendations. Goals included improving water quality of the lagoon and encouraging economic development. During the course of the project, requested change orders have added cost and time to the project. The project involves, like I said, St. John's River Water Management.
Can't hear you.
Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program. Testing, testing, testing. Okay. So the project was funded with major contributions from St. John's and DEP. The city owns the project. The county maintains, will maintain and operate the system. Mead and Hunt did the engineering, design, project management, grant assistance, and Metro constructed the project. So due to the lack of having a city administrator doing crucial parts of the project, it created a situation where consistent information was not provided to the residents. They ended up getting information that was not necessarily the same, consistent. They went to different people trying to get information when it should have gone through the city administrator. But because there was no city administrator, that caused an issue.
Student, are you saying that you were misinformed by other people? It's still very hard to hear you.
I understand them.
Excuse me. No comments, no questions from the audience at this time. Be patient.
We can't hear him.
We can't hear him, Mayor.
We're not here today to point fingers or sign blame. We're here to see how we move forward. The project will be of great benefit to everyone. Remember, there were no city tax dollars spent, and the county is making great concessions to residents. So we'll have a presentation from Mr. Blaze.
Sir. Leaf is on his way.
No. That speaker outside?
Yes. Well, it's inside facing outside. They are able to hear it. I checked with them outside. They are able to hear the speaker.
Okay.
But Leaf is on his way to clear up the muffling or the feedback.
The backup.
Yes.
All right.
We have from Mr. Blaze from Mead and Hunt and Mr. Ulrich from the Volusia County. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you to have the presentations and then you can have a discussion with them afterwards.
Brad?
Sure.
You ready to try? With that background noise?
I'll give a shot. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. My name's Brad Blaze. I'm a project manager with Mead and Hunt. With me is Mike Ulrich. He's the Utilities Director for Volusia County Utility Department. So we're going to kind of go over some, a little bit of background, cover the, you know, what's being constructed, talk about the schedule a little bit. We'll give you a backdrop of the financials, and then we'll close it out with a summary of the grant work plan, the funds that are available, and then a to-do list of things that the elected officials need to do following this meeting in order to keep this project moving forward, get people connected, and do all those kinds of things. And then we'll have Q and A at the end, and I've also got some other resource documents that are at the tail end of the presentation. We don't need to get into them unless you all want to. And then Mike's also going to talk about, you know, some of the nuts and bolts, about the rates and those types of things that may be of interest to the residents that are going to hook up with the system. So, if this works. Yes, no, maybe, no. Okay. I'll just do it old school. This is the Indian Harbor Estates Septic to Sewer retrofit project area. As we know, it covers all of Indian Harbor Estates on the north end bounded by Ariel, and then down south. There's 280 homes roughly that are included within the project area. Those homes are served by a little bit over 140 vacuum pits. Each of these vacuum pits can serve up to two residents. Typically, they're located on the property line between two residents. There's a four-inch stubout coming out of each of the pits, and I've got some figures that indicate what that looks like. So anyways, we've identified the project area. There are some fish camp areas that are identified as future connections that are provided for that can be connected into the system. Okay, the schedule for the project design and construction is complete. We had a startup and walkthrough today. There were some issues in the previous walkthrough that occurred in December, and those issues were addressed by the contractor. There will be operation and maintenance training for county maintenance staff that will occur next week. We will be issuing substantial completion documents to the Department of Environmental Protection, and we will, once that's complete and the county is good with the O and M that hopefully occurs next week, we can start making connections. In February-ish, we will be able to start making connections for homes, abandoned septic tanks, and then tonight, there's going to be a lot of discussion about, you know, what is the process? The inspections, the reimbursements that are going to be made available from the grant funds that have been received and are currently in the city's... They need to apply for reimbursement for those funds, but the funds are allocated by the department. So this kind of talks about generally what we're going to discuss tonight. Okay. That works. All right. So what did we construct in this project? That, you all may have seen it. That's the vacuum station generator building. Inside the building, it is a, actually a quote basement, and in the basement, that's where the vacuum tank is. And the reason it's done that way is it's got to pull vacuum, and if you raise it too high, you can only pull so many inches of vacuum, and therefore, in order to get enough vacuum to serve this entire area, we had to put it down. However, it is built to a floodplain, so we'd have to be at elevation 12 or above in order for water to get into the station. And 12 is four feet above the 100-year floodplain. There is a generator. Again, it's above the floodplain. So this station has a primary power from FPL, and it has a full emergency power generator Inside the station, there are vacuum pumps, and the vacuum pumps are designed to handle all of the flow in the system. There is a large vacuum tank that you can see down there in the bottom, and that vacuum tank holds vacuum that is pulled by the vacuum pumps in order to convey sewage almost in a stair-step type fashion from all of the vacuum pits that are located throughout the system. Once it's in the vacuum tank, there are sewage pumps that are capable of sewage from a negative vacuum environment. So they are specialized pumps. They pump into the lift station that's currently on site. From that lift station that's on site, all sewage flow is conveyed out to the county's wastewater plant on Beacon Light Road. So that's where all this flow is going. That plant currently has capacity to handle Indian Harbor Estates and the residents therein. There's also a project that is underway by the county of Volusia to expand the capacity of that plant. So that plant capacity is being expanded, and that capacity expansion should be complete probably in the '26 timeframe. So there is capacity for the treatment of the sewage, and then all of that water becomes reclaimed water and as land applied is reclaimed water. What does this look like from the house, from the homes? These are a couple typical schematics that shows a typical home address. One scenario is looking at the septic tank and drain field in the back, the others in the front. Long story short, you're going to have a conventional four-inch gravity that comes from the house. That needs to be installed by a licensed plumber. So that's going to be some of the discussion today is who is eligible to construct these systems, and you know, ultimately, what is it going to cost? So based on what I'm understanding as far as the direction that's going to be provided by council or commission is that if a licensed plumber with the proper accommodations and licenses, registrations to do business in Volusia County, they are going to be eligible to do that construction. Once it's complete, it will be inspected, and it will be approved by the county and by the city, and at such time, the connection can be made, and then whatever reimbursement would be made would be made at that time. I'm kind of speaking in advance a little bit, but generally, this is kind of what I'm understanding is going to be the process. The blue thing that you see there in the top, that is in a below-grade pit. That holds vacuum on the system. When the water in the actual gravity section comes up to a certain level, it fires a float. That float allows that vacuum to release, and it pulls a certain amount of sewage from the pit, puts it into the conveyance pipe, and moves it about 100 feet. Every time one of these pits fires, it advances that sewage almost like an escalator, all the way continually through the system into the vacuum station where it's pumped and goes to gravity. What you see there, it's not a great picture at the bottom. You'll see these brown things are in everybody's yard. That's a vent stand. In order for, you know, once you pull vacuum, there has to be vent that comes off of these stations so that they don't pull vacuum on the actual gravity section. In those vent stands is wiring. That wiring goes back to these pits, and then ultimately, that wiring is conveyed back to the centralized system, and the county has a remote telemetry system, a radio computer network, that they can monitor all of these pits. So if there is a pit that fails, it will show up in the wiring, goes back to the control room, is an unmanned station, and in that station, there's a PLC device that will log which pit has failed, and will send an alarm to the wastewater treatment plant that is staffed 24/7. So that was an addition. That was a change, and that change was requested by the county so that they can monitor each of these pits individually by remote telemetry. This was put up there. There is some discussion earlier that Jerome brought up that, you know, during kind of a very critical part of this project, the city lost the administrator and staff, and because of the nature of the contract and how it's set up, you know, city administrator and staff is the hub of the wheel. You've got us doing, Mead and Hunt doing design permitting and the construction, engineering and inspection, and observing the contractor's activities. Contractor is doing all of their construction management. Contractor is 100% responsible, and then basically, we evaluate it after it's done, verify that it meets plans and spec, and if it doesn't meet it, we don't pay for it, and they don't get paid until it meets the plans and specs. The county is the utility provider, and then the other two, St. John's, they had a cost share for 2.5 million. DEP came in for an SRF loan at 5.1, and then you currently have a legislative appropriation for 3 million. These are the construction expenses. So the initial bid from MES was 7.7 million dollars. There was one bid for this project. One bid. And it's a mining-based contractor. So there were not multiple bids, and no bids from any local contractors. So I will repeat that. It was also over budget. It was over budget because everything's over budget right now. And the bids came in about a million or so over the funding that was available. And the funding that was available is all the funding that was available. So everything was pretty much maxed out and exhausted. So through value engineering and some other creative maneuvering with owner-direct purchasing and other things, there was a net change order with this project on award for 1.6 million dollars, deducted off the contract amount. So that 7.6 became 6.0. Owner-direct purchases about a million, subtotal about 7.1, and then technical services during construction, total contract of 7.825 million dollars. That includes all change orders, and that's current to date. What that means is you can save 6.5% if a government buys the equipment. So there is about a million dollars' worth of equipment between the generator and all the airbag equipment. So if the city buys it directly, they save $65,000 in taxes. Not a lot, but it's $65,000. So that was why it was owner-direct purchase. That and, you know, a few other things that were done to try to get this thing built. Because at this point, if the bids came in with one bid, if you couldn't fund it, it would have pushed everything back till we went out to go fund more money, and things were, you know, costs were increasing by the day at that point. So that's how we got there. The project is built, and it's built to plan and spec, and it's been, and it is currently offered. This is the reimbursements that were made. The SRF loan was the primary funding source. When it says 80% forgiveness, what that means is that 80% of that loan, because of the demographics and the city income to statewide income ratios, you all qualify for 80% principal forgiveness. That's essentially, you get a loan, and you only have to pay back 20% of the loan. So that 20% that's going to get paid back gets paid back at zero interest over 20 years, and that will be paid back by the city, however, or by the county via the city. So the city's going to pay the loan back, and the county will be paying... Is it quarterly or...
I believe it's, I think it's quarterly.
Quarterly reimbursements for the roughly $60,000 a year in debt service that'll pay back that month. So there is no cost to the City of Oak Hill residents for this project. The loan that was received, there's a loan amendment for $300,000 midway through the project. There's a water quality grant for $2.5 million that was received, and then you have a 3.25 legislative appropriation. And of that 3.25, 246,000 was spent for various costs throughout construction. As far as the summary of the appropriations, total legislative appropriations, 3.25. Total reimbursements, whoa, what happened?
Where'd it go?
It left. It left. It left. The ball flew under the truck.
No, the laptop's working. It's the, oh, maybe it just timed out. Is Leaf still here?
Light's not on.
He was here a minute ago. I don't know if he got a backup or not. Is the ball... All right, well, oh, there it is. There we go, it's coming back.
Long story short.
Okay. All right, so basically, the balance remaining in the appropriation is 3 million dollars. There was, this is actually a snip from the grant agreement. This is the grant work plan. The grant work plan identifies currently the way the grant is set up, what elements of the grant are eligible for reimbursement, and how much. Currently, these are the amounts, 250 for design tasks associated with the overall amount, 15,000 for bidding contractor selection, 200 for project management. Connection to central sewers identified as 560,000. And the initial math on that, in this initial grant work plan was set up a while ago, was set up at $2,000 reimbursement times 280. So 280 times 2,000 is 560. Then construction, and construction is intended ultimately to, it can also be used for additional connections possibly, depending on the preference of the commission, but the way it's currently structured in the grant agreement is to try to go ahead and extend sewer service to other properties along the lagoon, and to further the ability to take more septic tanks offline, more areas, and continue this whole process. And so that's, that's how this grant is currently set up. This is the work plan as it sits today. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Ulrich and kind of talk about rates and what, you know, the county's position is on implementation, et cetera. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. Mike Ulrich, Water Resources and Utilities Director.
Quiet, please. Mike.
Here. How we doing? How's this? I can, all right. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, council members. Mike Ulrich, Water Resources and Utilities Director for Volusia County. I would like to just go back on one of the slides, if I may, for a moment, that Brad had shown, because I really would like for the residents, for all of you, to really understand one of the really unique challenges and some of the amazing work that was really done at the city level. Stuff that the county could not have done, the city being able to leverage some of its resources, a smaller community grant which was given to them by the St. John's River Water Management District for 2.5 million dollars. The 80% loan forgiveness from the Department of Environmental Protection for 4.7 million dollars. That 80% loan forgiveness is not something that the county would have qualified for, and thus, the strategy for being able to take care of this, you know, major area of the DEP's concern, being the canals leading out to the IRL, the Indian River Lagoon, was a major undertaking, again, with some tremendous city leadership, I don't mind saying, you know, over this period of time. The loan forgiveness at 80% leaves you with a loan of 20%, and as Brad had mentioned, that 20% once again will be paid by the city, but it will be paid with the county giving the money to the city as we will collect for the rates and charges to pay off the city's debt. So there is no ad valorem tax dollars to pay to, by anybody in the City of Oak Hill. There is no obligation outside of the monthly sewer services that will be, that will be part of the system. So again, I just really wanted to point out how unique this is. I have to operate various systems. I have 10 systems throughout the entire county in different areas. This is the only place that, among the 10 different service areas that I've, that we have served throughout the county, where this has been made possible. So again, a lot of emphasis, obviously, I know how much this, you know, the water means to the community. This community, it's very important to your, to your economic development in the future, your recreation, your quality of life down here. And again, I will just simply say, it's, it is a tremendous effort that has been accomplished, and so I just didn't want to let that go without at least explaining what's been involved at this point. So Brad had explained what is here and what's still available for council to consider for the future. This is just a general rate comparison. This is Volusia County's rates compared to, you know, the neighbor to the north immediately. I will also say, you know, in all fairness, the City of New Smyrna has slightly lower rates than ours. By about anywhere, if you're using 1,000 gallons, there's about an eight or nine dollar difference. If you use, on average, 4,000 gallons, the difference is about 15, $15 per month. Of course, you know, this is all based on the type of consumption that you would have. You all, if you live in Indian Harbor Estates already, you have your water bill, the sewer is the, is the additional, is the additional charge. Now, one of the challenges, again, when we start talking about costs, I think that there's always a cost to doing something, but again, to share with you, there's going to be an incredible cost of doing nothing these days. The Department of Environmental Protection, the state of Florida continues to pass laws every single year, more and more strict, Clean Waterways Act this current year. That was HB 1379, and the requirements for conversion to either enhanced treatment systems of existing septic tanks or connections to sewer systems are pretty much the direction that things are going. So again, in this situation, there was really no cost to residents within this community for any special assessments responsible for all this infrastructure, this $8 million worth of infrastructure that has already gone into the community. One of the bigger challenges, of course, today will be to discuss, all right, what is the cost now that we've put all of the infrastructure into the community? You know, what will be the individual cost to residents? The county also has an impact fee, which for any type of new development occurs, the county on a sewer, a typical residential home, charges $3,400 for an impact fee. However, because the DEP is also paying for advanced wastewater treatment and expansion at the treatment plant in Oak Hill for my system, I will be able to incentivize by not charging an impact fee for those that will hook up within the first 15 to 18 months, and I think that that will be part of the discussion that we will have with the, with the commission as well. So there will be no cost for that type of connection. That pretty much just leaves the decision to the city as to what, what happens beyond that, and that's the actual connection itself from the home, the decommissioning of the, of the existing septic tank, and then the connection to the, to the infrastructure out front. And I think that that's one of the, one of the key elements. But again, I wish I could tell you, you know, that, again, these are decisions that need to be made. The sewer costs are here, but add an advanced treatment or an enhanced system in the future, which is where it's obvious that the legislature and the governor's office is going on these things, that conventional septic tanks are not going to be, especially in most vulnerable areas of the state, whether it's outstanding Florida Springs or the Indian River Lagoon. They understand the importance of that. They're putting a lot of money out there to, for communities like, like Volusia County, like Oak Hill, to come up with some solutions, and if we've got some good solutions, they are investing in it. Also, just as I mentioned earlier, you're not alone. The wastewater treatment plant, of course, at, in Oak Hill, which is what I'm responsible for, we also had a conventional or a treatment system that was meeting all of its previous permitted requirements through, through the Department of Environmental Protection until new laws were passed that caused for increased, more restrictive requirements for water quality. As a result of that, we are investing about 25 to 28 million dollars, you know, in that plant to get to advanced wastewater treatment as well as expansion of that plant to be able to accommodate more of the septic to sewer projects as well as anticipated growth that I understand that the city has been working toward as well, as well as helping some of the businesses that are still, still on old aging systems along the river, that we will also work together to help those businesses as well. I guess that that's... Okay, I'm sorry. I'll turn that back over to you. Thank you again. new laws were passed that caused for increased, more restrictive requirements for water quality. As a result of that, we are investing about 25 to 28 million dollars, you know, in that plant to get to advanced wastewater treatment as well as expansion of that plant to be able to accommodate more of the septic to sewer projects as well as anticipated growth that I understand that the city has been working toward as well, as well as helping some of the businesses that are still, still on old aging systems along the river that we will also work together to, to help those businesses as well. Guess that that's, okay, I'm sorry. I'll turn that back over to you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mike. And what he was referring to is, it was called a primary focus area, PFA. Within a PFA, there's very restrictive rules on septic tanks. You know, all new septic tanks will obviously be advanced aerobic systems, and there will be timelines to retrofit septic to advanced aerobic systems. So the, you know, ability to, you know, continue using traditional septic tanks and maintain and operating them is just not happening anymore. And that's due to the PFA, which is, you know, brought down by the state legislature. So as Mike said, this is, the ability to actually get this done and paid for with state dollars shows a lot of foresight by the elected officials to say, look, this is coming. We're going to have to do this. And if you take, you know, what would have been the, you know, millions of dollars for a treatment plant retrofit to AWT, $8 million divided by 280, these numbers get very, very big. So I, you know, we talked to officials to, you know, starting this process quite a while ago to getting where we're at today. And at this point, you all kind of have a to-do list. And this to-do list is creating ordinance for the resident connection to central sewer, determining the reimbursement amounts and procedures to incentivize connection. There is a interlocal agreement with the county. There were MOUs and MOU amendments that were prepared that outline the interlocal, but that has never been finalized. And there are steps that need to be done to finalize that. And then you also need to have staff. And your staff is going to have to be able to, you know, create internal city procedures to engage and inform residents because, you know, a lot of the information is going to need to, to come out from the city to the residents to communicate with plumbing contractors, do all these things in order to implement and to get these connections done and to coordinate, which is the next item, a protocol between city and county staff. Because the counties, they're an operator. They're going to be operating the system, but a lot of the questions and the concerns and the issues are going to come with the city. So there needs to be some type of protocol as far as who the city's going to be talking to, who the county, in order to, you know, basically get things done. So all of these things to me, and I'm sure there's a lot more that need to be on the list, but these, in my opinion, in discussing with Mike, are the absolute minimum things that need to get done to kind of keep this ball moving down the field.
Mr. Mayor, council members, again, just one, one clarification for you on the final, finalizing the interlocal agreement. We have had memorandum of understandings for the last couple of years, which helped put in place the grant agreement, which you got from the Water Management District, the loan agreement, which you got from the Department of Environmental Protection. The actual finalizing of the interlocal hasn't been sitting on anybody's desk. As a matter of fact, it's been working with, you know, your, representative, your attorney, Mr. Simpson, as well as ours. And you can't really finalize it until we have an estimate of final costs, until we have some of the logistics, you know, finally worked out. So, you know, it hasn't, it's not like it's been sitting anywhere. This has been an evolving process over the last two to two and a half years. And now as we're, final conclusion of, of the project and ready to go, execution of the, the interlocal agreement, which stipulates, explains what the operating conditions will be, how the county will repay the debt on behalf of the city, and what requirements the city will have to meet as it already has, you know, stated that it would do as it received its grants from the Department of Environmental Protection as well as the Water Management District. So I just wanted to offer one clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move for questions from citizens as soon as Aaron gets them out of the basket.
All right, this is order. Carrie Berry. Carrie Berry, please come up and state your name and your address and ask your question.
My name's Carrie Berry. I live at 182 Gary Avenue. And some of the questions were already answered. The one that I still have, though, is the removal of the systems, will they be required to actually be removed out of the ground, or can they be drilled, filled with sand, and then a certified plumber can deem them inactive, this old septic system?
I'll take, I'll take a stab at it. Yeah, there are provisions to remove and place. So they don't physically pull the tanks out of the ground. So there are specific procedures outlined by the Department of Health that defines all that. And it's part of the permit and the inspection process.
Tracy Spence.
Tracy Spence. I live at 137 Indian Creek. I have two things. First of all, our, when our yard was torn up to have everything put in, and if you ever put back properly, we have a swale, a drainage thing, and the, the grass was not, they put the hay of that when it was Saint Augustine, and they covered our culvert part way, so our water is not flowing through the culvert the way it should. And our gravel was not put back. They took away, that's the first thing. The second thing is, there's some rumor going around that some of these newer houses are hooked up to the sewer already. Could you guys address that?
No one's hooked up, no.
Nobody's hooked up.
Unfortunately, nobody.
You shouldn't get a CO, that's all, garbage.
Yes, unfortunately.
Okay, I just wanted to get a, hear it from you guys. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dominic?
Dominic Dominguez, 197 Gary Avenue. I just have a question with regards to the demolition of the septic tank underneath the house, smack in the middle of it. What are you guys going to propose to do with that?
That's a good question for the health department.
Well, it was approved by the city to put it there, so.
That's what I said, it's going to be a good question for the health department and the city.
I don't have an answer for that. That's, that's a building code question, Florida building code.
Yeah.
And Volusia County Health Department, which is under jurisdiction by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. So those, those agencies, I, the plumber would need to address that. The plumber's going to need to figure out how that gets resolved. It might need to get all the way through the grout. I don't know.
Thank you, though. We'll look into it. We'll have to look into it.
We've got the same problem.
Same problem here, too.
Usually the captain.
But not in the middle of the house, it's under the.
If you call me all your information, I will see my documents. You're welcome. Mary Anderson, you're welcome.
The individuals. Did you fill out, did you fill out one of these cards?
Dallas Smith.
That's him.
I got the question first for Mike.
Yes, sir.
Or maybe this gentleman here, the, Dallas Brian Smith, address is 221 Gary Avenue. These different little pods that have the little pump stations up, you know, you said the vacuum, they stair up as they go. Are they kind of daisy chained together so if we have a failure at the top, the others can get up? No, doesn't work that way?
No, they're, they're manifold.
Okay, so if one's not working, then the other can kind of compensate. You all get a signal, somebody gets a signal, you come out, you fix it. Not a big deal. It's a good deal. When do we find out the cost of switching over? This is for the mayor or the city.
Hopefully soon.
So there's 300,000, there's 580,000 to switch us over, plus another 2.2 million there in case we need it? That you're going to use maybe to try to get other people on it? But if you keep, what if it doesn't cover us being switched over? It's going to be used for us first, right, before it gets used in another neighborhood?
It's possibly not going to cover your total cost.
Why wouldn't it? Why are we protecting? We're protecting the lagoon out here, right? It's not my lagoon, it's our lagoon, and it's other county residents, too, that use this. Now, if it was a private lake and it was my private lake, I would understand, but I'd have to pay the cost. But everybody benefits from this. Everybody in the county, everybody in the state. Maybe we just close the public ramps and we just pay for all the cost and nobody uses it. But if we're going to share this in the community, the state and the county should pick it up. And it looks like they did, but you're taking 2. something million dollars that was going to be used for this project to hopefully try to get other developments to use it. They weren't included. This is Indian Harbor, isn't it? Isn't it for just us? Then why are we using it for the campgrounds and other?
Hold your applause, please.
I did not prepare the grant agreement. However, I, Georgia did the grant agreement, or the grant plan, and submitted on your behalf. And it was citywide. It was not specifically for Indian Harbor. Now, the SRF loan, Indian Harbor Estates, the grant from water, the 2.5 million from Water Management District, Indian Harbor, project specific. The grant agreement that was executed, and I didn't apply for the grant, I don't know all the ins and outs, but I do know it was for the city of Oak Hill, and it identified the entirety of Oak Hill. It did not say this is just for Indian Harbor. So the Indian amendment to that grant agreement would need to get approved, first and foremost, not by the elected officials here, but by the state of Florida Department of Environmental Protection. And they would need to identify if the terms of that grant agreement spreads throughout the community or if all of it can be spent in one specific portion. So, so that's the best answer I can give you, is that it would go back to the Department of Environmental Protection. They would look at the grant agreement and they would make that decision.
Can you back that up so we can see where that is? So we know which grant you're talking about and which funds? The two, the construction, 2.2, construction is a big part of.
If you see DEP agreement number LP 0065, this is an excerpt at the bottom of that page.
Yes.
That grant was not, that grant is the below the line grant. All of those funds above the line, above that, the first few, that was project specific for Indian Harbor Estates alone.
Okay, so the other one is for?
The other one is a citywide grant. And in that grant agreement, in that grant application, that 560 was identified for specific connections to that. So the other was for construction and it is a citywide program. So you would need to go back to the original author of the grant application and the entity and the regulatory folks that approved that in order to amend that grant agreement. That's why I snipped this.
Okay, so the city can't make that choice? It has to be the grant person that offered the grant?
That's correct. That's why I put an actual excerpt from the grant agreement. That's what it, that's how it's written, so.
Is the Indian, Indian mound fish camp, is that part of the city? That's not city, is it?
Yes.
It falls in the city, same with Bisset Bay?
No, it's a, it's a, it's still in the county.
Okay, why is it on the proposed one for future, does use this money to get if they're not in the city?
They probably won't get, they probably won't get the money.
Well, good, I hope not, unless we're made for first, you know, getting our stuff switched.
Well, here, let me, let me make a comment for everybody. Volusia County ran water and sewer down River Road. I hooked in. There was no city money, no grant money. It came out of my pocket. There is no free rides, people. I hate to say that because I've been told the grant that we asked for, for $400,000, we didn't get. There's no guarantees. We're trying. And if the county says we can start hooking up in February, I believe we got $560,000. Divide 260, into that, comes out about $2,100. That's what we're looking at unless we can get more appropriated money because the money that came from the state was to increase, bring water and sewer around River Road down Halifax. Perm Science Tech ran their own line, $800,000 for sewer to the school. They don't have water, but the legislative intent when we asked for more money was to bring and remove more fish camps off of that river. That's the aim. I wish it could be free to everybody, but it's not going to be.
Repeat that, you, I'm sorry.
If you want to speak, you come up to.
Can you repeat again what you just said about the fish camps?
The fish camps, I'd like all of them to be off of septic, even if they've got aerobic septic tanks. Because aerobic septic tanks do a better job of removing the phosphates and the nitrates, but they don't eliminate it. Central Sewer eliminates it. And I, and don't get me wrong, I, in my heart, I wish we could pay for everything.
Right. But there is 200, 2,250,000 there that if we can get the grantor to go ahead and say, look, let's help people out, get them switched over. Because when you're saying you hooked into some water line, you did that by your own option. You didn't have to, did you?
At that time, the city did not have an ordinance.
Right. So if you didn't have to do it, we have septic tanks, most of us, and we don't, we're working just fine, but now you're telling us we have to change. I have no, new construction should be mandatory.
Let's talk about hookup. State requires, if it's within 200 feet of your home, mandatory hookup within 12 months.
12 months from now?
Yeah, state statute.
When does that go into effect? 12 months from now?
When, when, when the system is 100%.
Not this system. What does the state have in case we didn't even put the system in? What, does the state have any ordinance requiring us to switch over?
Yes.
When?
Within 12 months of it being available to your property.
We're not putting the system in. Just do a hypothetical. If we weren't putting a system in, would we have to switch over?
You don't have to, no.
We wouldn't have to, and we've been here 50 years, okay? 48 years. And that's because no effect out here on the lagoon. I can tell you, that's not the issue. The new issue is the new people coming in, adding into it, and stuff like that. The lagoon looked great 20 years ago. The only thing that's changed is you got seven times the amount of manatees you used to have in 2000. Okay? You got 7,000 manatees out there where you had 1,200. They eat 200 pounds of grass a day, and you're wondering why there is no grass. Grass needs nitrates to grow. That's why your yard looks so good out of where your septic tank, because all the nitrates are making the grass grow. If we want grass to grow out there, we shouldn't be getting rid of the nitrates. Trust me, I've looked into this. You can go out there and watch the manatees plow in that. If you've got a field, I used to raise cattle. You can start with three minutes, whatever you want, because I'm going to rant now for a little while, I'm going to have some fun. I've got 100 acres and I can only hold 30 cows on it because I can only graze three cows, one cow per three acres. How many can you graze out here at manatees? They can't tell you. In 1970, it was only 700 manatees out there, 1970. Then in 2000, there was 1,200. Now there's 7,000.
They have people that love those animals. I'm not one of them.
Thank God. I thank God every day that I wake up, there's no longer any saber-toothed tigers or tyrannal sources around because they would be protecting them as they eat us alive, like the alligators.
We're kind of getting off.
I know. So the manatees might be more of an issue then or something. But I don't have a problem with any of this. It sounds like he's got his stuff together and the system's going to work. We just need to get paid. Some people can't pay to do this. I can pay, but I know some of my neighbors can't pay $3,000.
That question was brought up earlier. What if the system wasn't in there?
Right.
And the septic fails? What do those people do? Move up and pack out and leave? So they find a way to get the money.
Right, they have to get the money themselves.
Yes, so. Yes, so-
But I've got a great system that's working great, how many of you-
All right, bird don't fly. Thank you, sir. Next.
Paul Davis.
I think Paul's outside. Oh, yeah, hey, Paul. Paul Davis, 226 Gary Avenue.
Two questions. First, most important question that I have is, in regards to the, to the tank that we have now, I have an aerobic tank, works good, but that's not even a question. Being environmentally conscious, I would like to repurpose that tank to collect rainwater, so that I could use that on my yard, flowers, or whatever. Why, why do I have to destroy that tank?
That's a requirement of the Health Department, if I'm not mistaken. Can neither one of you all the-
I mean, once you, once you suck it out, and scrub it out, I mean, even the county puts water, the little purple pipes, they're using to repurpose the water.
If you're trying to convert that to a cistern, the Health Department may have a procedure, if you're trying to convert to a cistern, I, I don't know. But it's going to, it's going to be Belushi County Health Department, and Florida Building Commission, those two are going to drive all of this. Not, this is not a city ordinance issue, this is a Health Department, and DEP, and Florida Building Commission.
Mr. Adams, can, we put that on list of things to check on? Converting, I know you and I talked, Paul. Can we silence the telephones, please? Paul. The city passed an ordinance about hooking up following the state's mandate. We added on that, that if, if somebody had an aerobic system, they could come to the city and get a special exemption, and not hook up. The only downside to that is, if, if the city finally gets a figure of reimbursement, okay? But the county is forgiving the $3,400 impact fee. So if you come and get an exemption, and five years down the road, your aerobic system has to be replaced, then you have to hook up, and you'll lose that $3,400 impact.
Well, I'm not interested in not hooking up.
No, no.
I just want to use, reutilize that-
Reutilize what's there, yeah. Well, we'll look into that for you.
And, and one, one other question, I guess, one of you two guys can answer that for me, it has nothing to do right now. How do we make the determination to use a vacuum system here, in lieu of a gravity-fed system, when it worked so well in the neighborhood right next to us for the last 18 years?
There is a document that we can make available to you, there is a full analysis with the county, on trying to do a conventional gravity sewer, and all the gravity would have had to gone down to the river, all the way to the other end.
Right.
Because you're up at elevation nine, by US 1, you're down at elevation three, on the other end, so you're bucking grade, all the way down, and you're going to be very, very deep, trying to get at each of those locations. Then you're going to have individual deep wet wells, at each individual cul-de-sac end, and then those would have to get pumped back up, and then you would have to dig the entire road out, and you couldn't get cars in and out. The constructability within the right away, it was virtually impossible to dig deep gravity wet wells, and still have emergency vehicles and everybody else get in and out of those dead-end cul-de-sacs.
I was just wondering, because they did that in South Florida for a partner, it worked well, so, but-
Yeah, and, you know, if it was done with the initial construction, it would have been great. They're trying to retrofit that-
No, it was, it was retrofitted, the neighborhood, the neighborhood had been there since 1970, they just put it in, like the-
There was an analysis of, of all the different systems, and this was by far the most cost-effective, the, the gravity was a lot more expensive.
That's valid, doesn't mean they were wanting to do it, I'm worried about reproaching that tank.
I'll get back with you on that, using that system. Next.
Hi, Bonnie Davis, 226 Gary. I have a question, if you could go back to one of your slides, where you're showing the front and the backs, current septic systems? Okay, our front yard has, we're in the front, we have a red septic system. And the way that are cleaned out is, it's right in front of our house, and our septic system is right in front of that. And we have to now go and tear up our driveway, because the pit was put on the other side of the driveway. Why should I have to incur this additional expense? Why was it, why was the pit not put on the other side, so I could have shared it with my other neighbor, versus all of us having to tear up our driveways, and incur that extra cost?
One pit serves two houses. We have to start, basically, at one end of the street, and go all the way down the street, and reliable about 50% of the time, one of the houses is going to be on the wrong side of the driveway. So about half the time, somebody's going to have to cross, and somebody's not. It's just throwing the dice, it's the odds of, if you took 280 times, and you ran, you know, one to each side, and then tried to figure out which side of the dri, it's, it's going to be about half and half.
Well, that's a lot of additional cost, because we talked to the plumbers-
But the, the-
They have to tear up our driveway, they can't go under it, which they can't-
The cost of a driveway is typically, concrete flatwork is about, I don't know, call it 100 bucks a square yard? 100 bucks, a couple hundred bucks a square yard?
They have to cut it, they have to cut it out.
It's probably, it's a couple grand. But, but to do another pit would be 10 grand.
I want the city to pay for that, for that additional cost, that I should have-
City not have to pay.
I mean, I'm looking, having to pay the cost to the government, now I got to pay to destroy my driveway.
If we would have added a- Like on a water sewer-
Say it on a single side, but there are certain ones, when you come out there and look at it, that made sense to put the pits on the other side.
If we would have increased a dramatic number of pits, and this is just-
Now, maybe the grant would have paid for that.
Grant was what it was, I, that's just, that's just the way that that worked out.
What you're saying is not correct.
Next.
Justin Maurice.
Justin Maurice, 778 Indian Harbor Avenue. It's like you said, I request to have my pod move to the other house, and it would have been the two houses together, and we never got anything from the city, that started from there. And they told us, we can tell them if we want to move, but nobody came. I sent, what, five or six email, never got, no answer whatsoever. That's being, that is not true, because that's what they told us, at the meeting over there, when they were doing it, and they said if they wanted to buy it to be moved, because it will be easier for the driveway, or anything like this, but nobody never called us back or anything, but that's the pass.
And there was a question from the initial kickoff meeting that we had, over the on-site.
Yep.
Asking them to look at, we actually-
Excuse me. The process is, if you have a question or a comment, you come up front, because the minutes have to reflect who's speaking, please. And while, while somebody's up there making comments, the rest of you, stop your meetings. There's people in here who want to hear what's going on, and they don't care about what your conversation is. Please, let's be respectful.
Thank you. I know you were saying about the septic tank, we can leave it in the ground, and bust it up, or whatever it is, and fill it up, and who, who's going to tell us how to do it? Or, "I know how to do it, you just bust the concrete, and that's it."
Plumbers do it.
Okay, the plumber will do it, but we could not do it on our own?
No. But if you, with the way the- My thought, and I, the commission hasn't decided on how this is going to be done, but my thought is, for you to get reimbursed, you have to have a plumber, you have to have a concrete bill, whatever, and it shows that it's paid, then you bring all of that to the city, and the city will embrace whatever the city can finally reimburse. So, I, I know, I know, it has to be pumped out.
Yes.
Okay, so there'd be a bill for the pump out. Uh, Mr., we had an individual that's in the business of site work, who does, and will bust in the top, fill in after the pump out.
Yes.
And so you'll have that bill.
But we cannot do it on our own?
No, not, not unless you want to-
Sure, fine.
Just do it by yourself.
But if you, the plumber, show it, and say, "We have pictures, we take pictures and show it to you," should be the same thing. At least we can save some money.
It's the Health Department that makes that decision, not the city.
Yeah.
That permit and all that comes from the Health Department, not the city.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't control that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Next.
Steve Dergan.
Steve Dergan, 187 Randall Avenue, Oak Hill.
Brad, I just want to say, I'm discouraged with your company. You might have sold them a bill of goods, but you're not selling me one. Your performance, your crews down there are terrible. We've had three water line breaks, where we've had to have plumbers. You folks did reimburse us, but it took a couple of months to get the money, where the water lines were marked. They busted our TV cable, which was marked with red flags and red paint. Our electric dog fence, $65 just to have the guy drive it to the dooryard. That's all was marked. We had to have that repaired. I mean, you sold these people a bill of goods, but you haven't sold me, and probably not any of these people. You guys went up and down that street with that front-end loader.
Can I correct you on something?
I'm sorry?
Can I correct you on something?
Yes.
The contractor was Metro.
Okay.
Metro tore up your property.
Okay.
Not Mead and Hunt.
Well, weren't they the inspectors that were supposed to be watching them? No?
No.
They're the ones that wrote the check.
No, city wrote the checks.
No, the city did not write the check.
Okay, you know more than I do.
Now, they're selling you a bill of goods.
Okay.
You guys are going to have to just get your act together. I'd like to say it different, but-
Yeah, you're being televised.
You've dug up my yard six times, planted grass seeds, six times. Tell me that something isn't screwed up? Gentlemen, is something screwed up?
We're not the contractor.
All right, you're not the contractor.
It sucks, man.
I mean, what are you, are you inspectors? I could go out there and inspect that better. I told the front-end loader where the wire was, then he cut it right in half with his blade.
We have-
I mean-
We are not-
Yeah. Oh, yeah, everybody's going to pass the-
We have no control over the means and methods. Means and methods are not within our purview.
All right, how soon, after this makeshift system gets going, do we have to hook into it? What's the, what's the timeline?
12 months, by state statute.
Huh?
12 months. 12 months.
Okay, you're sure of that?
I'm positive of that, that's what the state statute says.
Because I, I think you set yourself up for a lawsuit.
I wouldn't have it.
Yeah. Well, with, with this, six times in my front yard, digging it up, cutting the wires, busting the water lines, I mean, it's going to get a little old.
Well, when you file your lawsuit, please mention Metro as the contractor that did that. And the individual, because I heard one individual who had their telephone line cut, and the individual running a piece of equipment didn't speak English.
All right, well, I'm sure you swallowed, you swallowed that line of crap.
And I fully understand your frustration, because I'd be right there with you.
Hey, there's a lot of elderly people here, that are going to have to go to the bathroom. If that system goes down, we're in a world of trouble. Yeah, okay, we can laugh a lot at that, but a year from now, we won't be. Let's think about it, guys.
We'll, thank you. Thank you.
Larry Hall.
Larry Hall, 191 Randall Avenue, Oak Hill. My concern is, I'm a retired electrical inspector. Blueprints are strict guidelines, they are not suggestions. All work has to be inspected by a licensed inspector to the trade, not an engineer. As many problems as they had, non-speaking people could not read the blueprints, which are strict guidelines. What kind of warranty are we going to have? A year standard warranty? Can we extend that to a five-year warranty, so the city won't be, have, put out money to fix problems that they've had so many problems? And that's my concern, I see no inspectors, certified inspectors, not engineers, but licensed by the Department of Building and Profession regulations. And one other thing, we sold our house in Rockledge, if people don't know it, our inspector said the septic tank had to be replaced. And I worry about my drain field, I don't know how old the place is, with cars coming up out of the old ground, if I got to spend $15,000, so, to me, the sewer's a good, good price. But I worry about the construction, did it follow the strict guidelines of the blueprints?
I think I can answer that question, from what I've been told from Mr. Mike Ulrich, Belushi County. They're not accepting this system until it is 100% ready to operate.
What is the warranty?
The county is taking over the operation. Something fails, Belushi County Utilities, not the city, we don't have a utilities department. We throw it all on down. So, if, if something, if, if, if one of those pumps breaks down, they get a signal, and they'll come out and replace it, and looking in that vat pit, it doesn't look like it's that big a deal to replace that pump. You got an electric connection, and you got a plumbing connection.
But the electrical control wires are in that-
In that-
Lit station-
Yes.
Which is highly corrosive. What kind of seal do they put on the connections, are waterproof, watery?
Uh, maybe Brad can answer that.
The back device is mechanical. The only wire that you see coming out, it's a low voltage CAT 6, and it's strictly carrying the signal. It has nothing to do with the operation of that device. That, that device has a mechanical float in it, in the, in the pit, that mechanical float fires the valve, the valve has no power, it's using the vacuum, and the, the energy applied to that valve is applied from the vacuum pump, all the way back at the station. Once that float kicks, it opens a solenoid essentially, and then that opens up the vacuum to atmosphere, it pulls the sewage up, puts it into the pipeline- It pulls the sewage up, puts it into the pipeline, and then it moves it like the escalator I described. So, there is no 120 volt electric anywhere in the system. The only voltage is 20, is 40 volt three-phase back at the station. The 40 volt three-phase at the station powers the vacuum pumps, powers the sewage pumps. It's all got a generator. All of that was built, designed by a professional engineer and inspected by the building department that inspected all the electrical components and everything else.
Is that control wire? Is that...
All the control wire, everything.
Is that...
It's in, yes, it is, absolutely.
That's got to be protected for the department.
It is all surge protected, climate control room.
Fire metal.
Yeah. Everything, everything in that is meets, is up to code.
What is the warranty on the system?
The contract warranty to the county of Belushi is a one-year warranty for the actual construction. The equipment, the valves, I think, have a two-year. And then I can't, I don't, off the top of my head, what the other devices in the actual, like the fiberglass tank, it has a warranty specific to it. The vacuum pumps, they have a warranty specific to that. And I cannot pull that off the top of my head.
But any problems y'all had getting going, is the county and the city going to be responsible?
The county is the owner. The county is responsible for all operation and maintenance.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Jeff Fields.
Jeff Fields, 289 Randall. My question is about hookups. I had a phone call from Richard Schwartz, specifically told me to hook up. And my understanding is he is with Belushi County. Is that correct? Richard Schwartz, I can work for.
Richard Schwartz works for me. I don't know why he told, you can't hook up until you get an approval. Do you have one of the new houses up on the front?
I do, yes.
Those new houses are basically ready for hookup.
So, we can't hook up? As soon as the system's... As soon as we can?
Please. That's why we're here. Hopefully, we can answer the questions.
So, of course, we, we understand, especially with the new, with the new construction that's been going on. The county is with this, with the clearance of this, yeah, we will definitely allow you to get, get hooked up because you don't have an existing system right now. Everybody else, we're, we, you know, again, we want to encourage it, but we understand the urgency of homes that have been constructed, that have been waiting for several, several months now, from what I understand. Is that correct?
Correct. Mine is just being built. I'm ready to hook up.
Oh, okay.
There have been almost a year.
Yeah. Oh, I'm not, yeah, that I'm not aware of. I mean, the, we knew that the system was going to be, what was it, last, we're probably about two months behind schedule on what was the original schedule with this. So, you know. But in any event, yeah, I mean, that's going to be fine. We do look to complete the MOU with the city, you know, formalize that as we, you know, as we've done with, excuse me. We're going to be formalizing the interlocal agreement based on the MOUs, but working in good faith with the residents with the urgency that is not, some of these, we would certainly honor that by all means, yes.
So, we're ready to hook up?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Don Schreiner.
Hold up. Yes, Mr. Don.
Don Schreiner, 170 Randall Avenue. I'm here to represent one of our neighbors, Johnny Peterson. I don't know if he's in the room yet. He's back there. If you recall, he is on the corner. He's got to traverse his property 200 feet to get to one of the pods. And I know during the original meeting and the kickoff of this project, there were several concessions made to several residents with regard to the pod locations. And there's, there's several lots that just had one pod for that lot. Like, I'm aware of several. I don't know where they all are. But I was, I was over at his house. I don't know if any of you have been to his home to look at the situation where he's got one large lot that can be divided into two. But I'm here to ask you to go visit his lot. He's got a huge expense that he's looking at, and he's got a huge logistical issue of how to get to that pod, whether he goes straight out and, and, and down the rideaway. But I'm asking you to, to go look at it, see what you can do, find out what the cost is. Bill, you, you live in the neighborhood. You can stop by there and look at it, right?
I've been by there several times.
Okay, very good. So, if you could look at that and look at another work order change. Because I know you were very accommodating early on, and he's upset because he was told one thing by people in the field, and I know that was wrong. He should have, you know, perhaps got it from Mead Hunt or whoever's in charge here in the city. But I, I just think that's, that's a really long, long way. And, and there's, there's probably actually issues if it's got to drop a quarter, what is it, a quarter inch per foot? You know, that, that's a long, long way, and he's got to go really deep. So, I'm asking you to revisit. I know he's talked for himself, but that's all I got for you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Don.
James.
Hi, my name's James Menory from 217 East Ariel Road. And I have two concerns. One is, is the road top finish? It's top finish?
Yes. It is finished.
Okay. All right. During construction, I noted the crossovers on each one of the crossovers going to the pumps were very slightly compacted. They put a visor, and they went back and forth a few times, and that was it. I just want to make the town aware that... I just want you aware of it. Second of all, we bought our house on Ariel Road, and nobody told us where the septic tank, nobody told us anything. Since we bought the house, we found out that they put this double-wide trailer in. They put a septic... I need some helper answers.
Have to see what the Department of Health allows. Because the way they got it set up, they got on to me because I removed my aerobic system because I had a friend that had a loader and had a dump truck. So, I got it done for about 500 bucks. You and the other, and they came to me and wanted to find me because I didn't get a permit from the Department of Health to remove an aerobic system. And I, I'm going to be real honest. I don't know why the man who, back then, decided not to press the issue, but he wanted to know the name of the person who removed it. Now, the gentleman that removed it for me, because I was an insurance agent and I wrote his liability coverage, he called me up and he, the, the Department of Health individual inspector wanted to know how he disposed of the aerobic tank and all the filters. Because apparently, there's a certain way that that has to be done. Luckily enough, my insured knew what he had to do. He took it to the dump. He told the dump what it was. They have a special area where you get rid of it. So, it didn't cost me anything. I don't know, because I've been here long enough since 1994. I've ridden through Indian Harbor Estates a number of times. And there has to be a lot of septic systems under driveways and under homes. Has to be.
Yep.
You know? I don't know what the Health Department's going to do. That's one of the things that the City Commission and, and Mr. Adams will have to research and see if, okay, it's covered up, just leave it alone. You know, I mean, I think, in my heart, I hope that's the response we get because I don't know. What are you going to do? Move your home?
I know.
So that you can demo the tank? Yeah. You know, the drain field under your driveway, okay, but the tank is, people aren't going to move their homes. It costs thousands and thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
So, I'm hoping that's not an issue.
All right. So, I'll just...
Mr. Adams and I will reach out to DEP and see.
Thank you.
Because this is an unusual situation. It really is. Thank you.
Carrie Werning.
Carrie Werning in Dean Creek Road. In your ordinance, Mayor, it does not state anything at all about aerobic systems. The only statement it says is if a septic system has been replaced within one year of availability to central sewer, the property owner can request a special exception. That is the only reason in this ordinance that was passed. It's 2019-12. And if you look at the recorded documents, that's the only reason for an exception. I've been asked by several people to inquire. I know you keep saying you have to have a licensed plumber. Many people have asked, if I got a backhoe and I dig my trench and I put my pipes in and a plumber comes and hooks up the last five feet, can I do that?
They get reimbursed for whatever the plumber charges.
So, the plumber could be reimbursed completely. But a person would be allowed to go from their tank or clean out wherever and run it out to that area.
The commission hadn't voted on that, but in my opinion, if somebody digs the trench, even if you do it by hand, and the plumber charges for whatever he charges to lay pipe and hook up, that's the bill that we're going to see.
Okay. Did Mike already leave?
Mike Ulrich?
No.
No, ma'am. Mike?
No, he's here.
That's okay. I didn't think it'd stuck out. Quick question, your plant, these systems are going to ring back if there's a backflow or an issue or a problem?
That's right.
Is the plant manned 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
This plant is not, but our coverage is 24/7. As a matter of fact, one of the conversations we were just having in here would be to have, you know, for, because again, responsiveness to the community and everything is we could probably work into our memorandum of honor, I'm sorry, our interlocal agreement would be to have somebody like Mark or somebody from Public Works that will be trained here to be able to alleviate or address any potential concern. Because obviously, none of us want to see anything back from anyone's house.
Exactly.
It's a great question. It's a, what we would like to do would be to work with the city and something like that.
Now, you're leasing the, the system back from the city. So, the city technically owns it. In the event that this system fails and it backs off, okay? You're the ones that will get sued.
That's correct. Which is all the reason, which is all the reason I want to keep the city working on this type of system. You know, for, for what it's worth, all, all joking aside and everything, you know, this is a, this is a new challenge for this, this type of system, but it's not, it's not the first system that has ever gone in the state of Florida. We, we studied this very carefully in the Keys as well as South Florida. Sanford also has systems of...
Your system is completely different though. They have a vacuum system, but their system is better.
Erback is a, is a worldwide company. So, it's not like they don't know their business. However, we've told Erback, we said, "You better, if you come to Belushi County, you better do a good job here because if you don't, we're not going to be using you anywhere else." And quite frankly, with 100,000 septic tanks throughout all of Belushi County, there's some businesses we have and some residents that are going to have to address these. Because some of these, these are state rules. There will be a cost to do something. There will be a greater cost to do nothing. And as the mayor had said earlier, when a, when a conventional system fails and you're in a vulnerable area, whether it's the Indian River Lagoon or one of our outstanding Florida strengths, there's going to be enhanced treatment systems that are going to be required.
Correct.
And so, you know, at least in this type of situation, when it gets turned over and the monthly bill is being paid here, we're responsible for operations. We are responsible for ensuring that the city's debt is paid so that there's no impact on the city's, on any of the city finances. And you better darn well pray or believe, I'm not interested in any lawsuits or any residence in any part of Belushi County.
I'm sure you're not. Now, I know you made in the presentation a thing as to the cost, okay? 90% of the people weren't able to see that.
Hold on, Carrie. The individuals in the back holding their own meeting, would you cease? Thank you. Go ahead, Carrie.
You, you had a slide up there that talked about what it's going to cost us individual owners.
Does the monthly base down, base down whatever you expect?
People could not see that who were sitting in the back. So, could you explain to us how much we're going to have to pay? So, the people who are standing outside would be able to see that?
Next. There you go.
Okay.
Thousand gallons.
So, so if you're 1,000 gallons a month...
Yes, right now.
...usage, your average bill is $22.44.
On water.
On water. And then there will be an additional fee of $32.61 for a total monthly bill of $55 if you're using only approximately 1,000 gallons.
That's correct.
What's the average usage?
We would estimate a typical use for two to 2.3 people, if you will, you're going to be looking at about 4,000 gallons, some a little bit higher, some a little bit lower.
Okay. For the people who are outside, if you use 4,000, your water bill's 37.26, your sewer bill is $50. Let's just round it off.
Carrie, this, this is all on the, the city website in the presentation. This file or this presentation is, is downloadable, right?
And it will be on the website so that we can see this?
Yes. Yes.
The whole presentation?
This whole presentation is on there, yes.
Okay. All right. Very good.
I can tell you what I pay. $80 a month, and I water my grass with it.
Okay.
Don't do that. I'm just kidding.
Oh, I shouldn't have said that. No, I don't.
I'll water it as value. You don't have that much grass, believe me.
And, and I did tell Paul ahead of time, there is a section in the public health note that tells you what procedures can be done to convert a septic system, period. Doesn't have to be aerobic, but to convert any septic system into a cistern. So, I, I had it, but I can't find it right off the...
That's okay. We'll find it for Paul.
But that isn't... I think that's it for right this minute.
Thank you, Carrie.
I know. Thank you. And thank you, Paul.
Yes, sir.
Robert Clinton.
Robert Clinton here. I'm representing my sister who lives at 296 East Ariel Road. And I was glad to hear that the mayor's been here since 1994. I think Steve and I have been here a lot longer. My memo says the meeting started at 5:30, so I may have missed this along with a lot of other people. But when is going to be the final hook-up date? And who's hooked up to it now? Because every few nights as you drive past a sewer plant, it smells like somebody's toilet blew up. And the other night, I could smell it from US 1 all the way down to the river.
It smells like that all the time.
Not like the other night. So, there's something, something's going on where it's raw sewage up by the highway.
Could be the manatees in your canals.
No, it's not. Has there been a date set? Because originally, it was supposed to have been in September. And now, I'm told maybe in February. So, I'm sure a lot of people would like to know, when are they going to hook up to it?
When the system's 100% ready and accepted. When the system's 100% ready and accepted by Volusia Utilities.
Which may be...
Maybe in February.
Any idea when it's going to be presented?
Hi, Mike Ulrich again. We have just, we made this statement earlier. As a matter of fact, the, I understand that startup was successfully done today. Our operations team is onsite, as was Mark. And we are looking to formalize an interlocal agreement with the city for anybody that's going to have connections that if you already have an existing septic system. We'll start the clock and the incentive base pay at that point in time. However, we do realize that there is some new construction, which for some folks who have been waiting, who don't have a septic system, period, as of right now. And of course, even though we do not have a formal agreement with the city, it's important that we, again, honor the, you know, for any new residents to the community that don't even have a septic system, that they'll be pretty much the first ones on, will be ready to take them. So in the meantime, I just understand, I was speaking with your city attorney in here just a few moments ago. I mean, we're really working very closely to get that available. As I said, the county will certainly provide that incentive. It's our goal to want us, you know, to help everybody that wants to hook up within that period of time. And, you know, I guess that that's the main thing. But a very successful startup today, so we're very optimistic about a path forward.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am. Come on up. I guess you're one.
Brenda Hardy, 184 Randall. You just mentioned the new homes would be the ones that can hook up, and I agree with that. Okay. What about the people that are having leach field issues? They won't give us a permit because they want us to hook up to the city sewage.
Oh, is that where the health department's right now?
Well, you have to come through the City of Oak Hill for your permit. Not for septic. So what I'm saying, if with people that are having leach field issues, what happened was during the process of all this being done, instead of someone having patience and waiting till the big front end loader moved, they ran across the yard and squished part of my leach field. So I'm having to pay $340 every two months to have my septic pump. And I was just wondering, because of that, would I fall under the category, could I hook up when they're letting the new people hook up? Would I be able to do that?
So to answer, of course, to answer the question, we're trying to do in the best interest of any resident that has a unique situation. As I said, you know, with regards to what you've just described, I guess that's more of a contractor issue of who had done the construction and everything with regards to what happened there. But I would think that, again, Mr. Mayor, Commission, if you have some special circumstances while we work, we will work in good faith with the city, you know, on these issues for the benefit of the residents. Please understand, the system has literally just started up today, so it's not like it's been waiting. We literally just started it today, so...
Well, I know you said that with people with the new homes, which I understand that, how about us, how was this issue that we didn't cause?
Sure.
Would we be able to hook up?
Again, I would just ask that, you know, it's a city policy and decision that, you know, we will work in good faith with the city, we'll honor whatever the wishes are as we're trying to do in the best interest of the citizens.
Okay. I have another question. Okay. Y'all call them the locator wire. That's the green wire that goes down in that white pipe that has the brass top fitting on it. If you go down East Ariel, you will notice that there are homes through there, that the PVC is still there, the green wire is still hanging out. I have a picture of it if you would like to see it. I can show you. They're not hooked up. So that locator wire is still, how can it send somebody a signal if it's not even hooked up yet? I have the picture on my phone if you'd like to see it.
Go and send that to the...
What would you like to look at right now? Right there it is?
That is not a signal wire. That's actually, that will get picked up in the punch list, but that is not what talks to the computer.
Okay, what does that wire do?
That wire, what happens is when they call and locates for FPL or anybody else that's digging, 811, one call, they put a wand over top of it. They'll put a tone on that wire, and that tone will tell the contractor who's digging in the area by using proper equipment where that pipe is underground. It has nothing to do with the operability of the system. And that, that wire is supposed to be terminated inside the PVC. There's going to be a punch list, and that punch list is going to have a lot of stuff on it.
I want to ask another question.
And that, but that right there is a locator wire. It's not a signal wire.
Thank you. Sue, Morehausen?
I need to answer her question.
I think the ones that are in need should be first. You have an 214 Gary Avenue. First question I have was more operation. I'm assuming you have a hot swap pump on hand because if a pump fails and someone comes out, yep, pump is dead. And, well, let's order one. Delivery time. Let's do a quick three-month turnaround. In the meantime, you know what hits the fan?
There are spare vacuum valves. They have numerous spares.
No motor.
The vacuum valve doesn't have a motor.
No, I'm trying, the vacuum has to be generated somewhere.
The vacuum equipment back at the main is all redundant.
Okay.
Everything's forward and...
Good enough. Second is a quality question. The road crossings were compacted to more or less whatever compaction test they did or didn't do. But when the surface was done, you had four or six inch drops versus the two inch drop for the wear surface. And every, almost every road crossing is a divot in the road. And I already see cracks where the road crossings meet the pre-existing road surface. And look at it, it's not...
Picture sent. The asphalt's going to crack. What they did was they used local fill. So instead of trying to do compaction in very small trenches, what they put in was a 300 PSI flowable fill material. There's going to be a differential in density between the flowable fill and the background line rock. So there will be reflective cracking that occurs, just asphalt cracks. Now, if there's dips, if there's dips, that can be addressed. Just take the pictures and...
Okay. Third question. You mentioned that it has to be a Volusia County certified plumber. There is a mobile home torn down on my street, Gary Avenue, and I don't know if they're putting a side built home up or a mobile home. I just happen to know a contractor that does work from Tallahassee all the way to Miami. I don't know if that guy would be certified for Volusia County, has a state license.
If he has a Florida state contractor's license, you would need a Volusia County occupation license. Do your business in Volusia County.
Doesn't affect me, not yet, but anyway, that's... Okay. One more question, and I don't know, I think Carrie kind of answered it. I have my septic tank in the driveway with a manhole cover. I hate to tear it down or tear it out, and I can see that being used as a pump chamber. Is that an option?
Again, that's Volusia County, I'll form.
That's it. Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you.
Tom Pence, 295 Indian Creek Road. I own Indian Mount Fish Camp. I've got three questions. The first one is, on the slide, you had Indian Mount Fish Camp as a future. I attended the very first meeting that you had on Ariel Road, and I asked the question, you were there, I don't know if you were there, I know Con was there, because I asked the question, is Indian Mount Fish Camp going to be included in this project? I was told it was. And so I went along with that. Six months later, I was told it wasn't. And I came to the meeting, and Mayor, I think you said you weren't included, Tom, because rumor has it, you didn't want it. Is that what you said?
That's what I said.
My question is, I never was asking, Mike, you may answer this question. Somebody obviously had to have asked me. Nobody asked me if I wanted to be included because I do, I have an aerobic system. It works fine. Healthy partner comes by and certifies it every year, I'm in compliance. So I really didn't need to convert to it. But also, I want to save the lagoon, so I want to hook up to the system. But it just bothers me that, Mayor, you said it was rumor. I'm asking the question, who gave you the rumor and why wasn't I asked, why I wasn't allowed to be part of the process?
Would you be Mr. Pence?
Yes, sir.
Please, please.
I'll say it.
Okay, so, hi. Okay, so with regards to, you know, really the entire project itself, where you're mentioned as future is because at the time when we had put this all together and it was designed, I think it stopped like two properties short. You were a commercial, you're a commercial property.
Correct.
Correct, yeah. So, I mean, your program or any program that we would seek for any of the future RV parks and everything to help with whatever you would look to try to do, but there was never going to be infrastructure that was going to go into your property and to help you. But, and I believe the city finally brought connection to your property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, so I mean...
But I went to, a long story. I went to the county years ago to ask if I could hook up to it because I'm very environmental sensitive. But nobody bothered to ask me. And when I went to the meeting, because this cost me several thousand dollars to get an attorney involved because I had to go about the road, who's running, to get the pipe from where it stopped over the two lots to me, and I spent $7,000. And I had to do it because I was told by Con that I was included in the project. And then all of a sudden, six months later, I wasn't. And then I started going to an attorney, getting all this stuff involved. And somebody, I'm going back to you, Mayor, because your comment was, is that the rumor has it? You were asked and you were told, you were told them you didn't want to be involved in it. But nobody bothered to ask me as owner, and I'm a record on everything.
Sure. Yo, Mr. Pence, again, I don't know all of the basics for what, I mean, I'm sorry, we've never met, but I'm certainly, you know, I mean, we're here to try to address what... But it was, this is, again, just to remind, this is a city project paid for by the DEP with all this loan forgiveness. The Water Management District, the county will take ownership and operation of it once it's ready. The determination as to what got designed for what at the time and the grant settling through, I'm sure probably just took a look at where is the last home that exists in the community and did not factor in the commercial property. It's not yours, no more than it did to the north one, Biscuit Bay. So it wasn't as if you were excluded as much as this was a residential, residential property. Now, again, I can't tell you, I'm sure that there's a lot of communication that went around to different places. Happy to research or find out more. I know that I spoke with one person, but it definitely wasn't you. But again, I can't, it's something I'm happy to talk to you about. But again, this was a residential property funded through DEP, through the Water Management District. I think that, you know, if you look to want to try and do this as well as all of the other fish camps along this river, where this community depends so much on, you know, these fish camps and everything, then I think we have a great program to put forth through the DEP and St. John's together.
No, I need to know who I talked to. And I will go back to you. You've been very good about helping me. And I will hook up to it, but my issue is, it leads up to another question, is that this project, regardless who was responsible for it, and somebody was, and Mayor, you keep on saying it's the contractor. The contractor did what was supposed to be, what he was contracted to do. Somebody did not oversee this project. And my issue is, is that I'm big on accountability. I'm hopeful that either you or somebody will sit there and do a forensic audit to go back and find out what we did wrong and what we could have done differently. Because you're going to be putting this system throughout the whole county, not county. The City of Oak Hill at some point in time. And if you called everybody out here, they'll give you at least one or two things that could have been done differently, that should have been done differently, because there's no accountability on this project whatsoever. I think that Mayor will agree with it. I started back in 2023, about four or five different big issues here that should have never happened. Now, I go back to the slide, and I saw where we paid $200,000 for a project manager. What was that project manager's responsibility? And Mayor, you keep on saying Con's responsibility for doing this project. I'm saying Con didn't do anything, but it's the county, it's the city commissioner's responsibility to oversee Con. And I'm sitting there, what was the $200,000 we paid to the project manager? What would Richard and the other guy's responsibility out there? I wanted to get my first question. The second question, will there be a forensic audit done on this project to find out what went wrong and what we could have done better so that in the future it doesn't happen again for the City of Oak Hill? Because a lot of these cost overruns possibly could have been eliminated.
So there's obviously a lot of good questions around here. I'm not trying to avoid any of them. To bring out to you again, there was a tremendous loss of knowledge and information in the center of that place when the entire city administration was gone.
The city administrator didn't leave till last end of July. That's when they left. This project was winding up when she left.
Okay, well, our role is upon completion. That's where the operators. We also worked very closely with the city during a period of time to support their efforts with regards to the Water Management District, helping them get the grants and, you know, helping share, you know, Oak Hill's story, if you will, to the DEP, to the Water Management District, to, you know, keep the cost down as much as we possibly could. The city entered into an agreement with me, hunt to design it. The only single contractor that bid on this, and I'm sure as you know, or as most people know these days, is there's more work and there's workers out there that's happening throughout the entire state of Florida right now, we'd love to get one bid. But, I mean, the bottom line is certainly we would be very happy to get any comments, questions, feedback, as we have to work toward the future, looking at some of these things. Because the vacuum systems in a existing community, now, if you're talking new development, you still want to go with the traditional gravity systems and things like that. When you're going into an existing community and you're tearing up neighborhoods, especially when you're tearing up in that community when there's no way to go in any other direction except, you're going one way out of the community, you know, you have to have those, you have to have those types of considerations. The actual cost of construction, probably, I don't know, Brad, maybe in the vicinity of $3 million less by going to vacuum system. That was just based on conversations we had with St. John's County and some of the work that was done over in South Florida. So, but no, no kidding, I mean, this is, this is the very first vacuum system in all of Volusia County. It's very critical that it's done, if it's done right, and we get the feedback from folks. We had every utility director onsite in Indian Harbor Estates a couple of times to actually observe this. And I can tell you from the standpoint of being the utility director, the next utility director that you meet that says that they're interested in doing septic sewer will be the first one. These are incredible challenges. We've really worked very hard to try to help the community, especially with these, you know, very burdensome state regulations that are continuing to come down and force everybody toward this direction. So again, we're not the regulators, we're just trying to help facilitate whatever we can possibly do as your city has done, as well as the county, to try to help wherever possible.
And I appreciate that. My question is, will there be an audit? Because when I look at the slide, the city did a great job of getting the grants. There's no question about it. Man, it's marvelous to sit there and get $7 million and the city's always responsible for $800,000. That's miraculous. But my question is, because this is going to be going through the whole city of Oak Hill at some point in time. And my question is, I would hope, my question is, will somebody do an audit? Somebody independent to find out what we did wrong and what we could do better so it doesn't occur when we start doing it throughout the city of Oak Hill? Is that my question?
Certainly a consideration.
It is a consideration.
Yes.
Okay.
But to throw something at you, and I probably shouldn't, the vacuum system was chosen because of the gravity system would have torn up the whole residential area. Okay. My system is, I have a grinder that sits out in front of my house, and it pumps everything into the forced main. Because of the situation there, gravity was way costly. The commission chose vacuum because to save not just thousands of dollars, millions.
And I understand, I do understand all that stuff. I better put it on my account, too.
I can't speak for, because I'm not an engineer... I can't speak for, because I'm not an engineer, but I can't speak for where we're going to need other vacuum systems within Oak Hill. I'm not saying that we won't, but I, right now, we've got two developments, and it's mandatory hookup to the water and sewer. So, and so those are gravity systems, I think. They may be grinder, I don't know. I haven't seen the final on that.
Well, I've got to put a grinder, I think, in front of mine. Is that correct, Brad?
Yeah, you'll need a grinder.
So I.
Two, two buffer tanks.
Yeah, and I understand all that stuff. But my, my whole point was, we needed to have an audit because there, and the second one, I don't understand why there was no accountability to this project whatsoever. You know, Khan was the person responsible for it. She should have been fired a long time ago because she didn't ever come down to drive the roads. She didn't know what was eating hell going on out there. So, excuse my language, but she didn't know what was going on. And I came up multiple times. Two other suggestions. I would encourage you to have another meeting to invite the health department here, because all these questions people have. My, I save a lot of time, because I don't be going down to health department asking questions. And the second suggestion is, is that you need to distribute some type of a list, because I don't know what kind of plumber to get, who do I get to? It's not to say I'm looking for, I'm looking for a list of four or five people that you, the health department, the city, or the county would recommend. Because I would be calling up Joe and find out he's not the right guy, and I've gone through the whole process. So hopefully you'll listen to that. We can enlist the four or five contractors that we can actually contact with.
Thank you, Mr. Pence.
Good idea.
If I may, just to counsel again, nobody is, the, the lack of the city administrator and staff created a lot of situations where a, a single council member might call us or a resident might call me, or another member might call one of my engineers, or my customer service manager, or something like that. That, that is what we're talking about with regards to the communication. The things that you said, Mr. Pence, are exactly right. I mean, we, we would like to, to know, you know, so that we don't repeat anything that would occur there. But, I mean, we certainly had some, some trying or some, some critical, critical period of times where folks were looking for answers to questions that, quite honestly, not all of us were qualified for the individual or unique questions that were being asked. And as you mentioned, that even the health department themselves, right now, as I speak to the health department, they're going through, they're going through major changes where they're going to, this, this septic, or the septic tank division of the health department will eventually fall under the Department of Environmental Protection. So, I mean, there's a lot of, as I go around, and I have to work with the outstanding Florida Springs on the other side of the county, there, there's just a lot of room for improvement as far as communication. So I can certainly appreciate what you're saying. I don't know if the term audit is there, but we certainly welcome any feedback, anything that helps the residents understand, you know, what, what needs to be done. So, again, I appreciate everybody's feedback. I've visited some of you in some of your homes to come down because what you said mattered to me, what it, it matters to us, and I can tell you that it matters to the commission. But, you know, I mean, again, we apologize for, you know, some of the loss of communication. And of course, when you don't get the answer that you might hear, then, you know, you'll start listening to others that might have a portion of that, that stuff. And so, you know, again, communication was a great point. And I think that there's certainly an opportunity here with the path forward as to how we're going to, you know, try to address that.
Thank you. Next.
Larry.
My name is Larry Ramo, and I'm representing Sherwin-Beetle, 224 Gary Avenue. A lot of my questions have been already answered. But every crossing, as one gentleman was saying, every crossing that goes across that road is a divot, every one of them. And I worked construction for fifty years. I've been retired now for a couple. That's for compaction. Prior to, this lorry makes over the top, they didn't pack the haunches on the pipe. So now we've got divots every, every crossing. And then there's poor construction practices, like repairs to driveways and things, which they knocked a corner off of one of my, it flares out at the end, they busted that, and that's the patch that they put in there. That's not an acceptable concrete patch. The guy across the road had brick papers in his, and his flared out at the ends. And he removed all the brick papers himself, stacked them, numbered them so they could put them all back. When it came to putting it back, they didn't put the flares on them. They took the flares and threw them away. So there is very little oversight in construction. I would recommend for the next processes that there be much better oversight. I got with the field engineer, not their field inspector guy, me, who was there a couple times, who brought up about changing locations of the PVC or the tanks there, so you didn't have the driveway issues. So the guy pointed out that the neighbors, Paul's, there's, if they moved it to the other side, they could service those two houses. If they moved the other one to the other side, they could have served the stuffs two houses, the other two houses without cutting through the driveways and things. And they took that information down. Oh, yeah, we'll go and take it up to the engineers and make sense. And now, it's just the way it was, just all cut down across the driveways.
Do you know that?
There's very little, little communications between the inspectors that went up to the engineers as far as we know, everything we was having. Nothing happened. I do understand about the whole, I worked, I did large commercial construction. I've had a thirty-foot deep trench going down the middle of the road, and I understand the process of having to go with the, this vacuum system. It makes sense, you know, because it would have been tremendous impact to try to do it the other, the other way. But when will these construction repairs be finalized, then these road repairs? Because we have a brand-new road, and it's just not a brand-new road.
We'll have final inspection. Anything that needs to be brought up as a punch list can be on the touch screen. We're still holding four retainers on the job, and if there's something that's identified as a defect.
I don't know if you'll have enough retainers with all those divots in that road, and all of those, not just Gary Road, all of those. So there's a tremendous amount of repairs that will have to be made to bring it up to the construction standards.
I need to go to the catch.
I understand. But I mean, every, every crossing.
Here you go. Take my card, send me an email, and then I can get it over to you.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Yes. Daryl? And when you please come up, please speak into the microphone so everyone in the back can hear, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Daryl Weisenstein. I live at one eighty-eight Randall Avenue. I just have a question about the mechanics of the valve in front of my house. Does that have a built-in check valve? Or do you recommend every homeowner put a back check valve in line in their own sewer? In the event the silenoid tank fills up with sewage, what's to keep it from just keeping on going up to my house except for a back check valve? Is that something that's built in?
The section of the, of the tank that is in the ground is below grade.
So it'll overflow?
So it would overflow, it would never go above grade. So right now, what you have is a vacuum system. So those vacuum valves that are in there are constantly subjected to vacuum. So if that fails, what would happen is, it would constantly be pulling and pulling and pulling and pulling, going the other way, away from the house into the system. So a quote-unquote failure on that back, on, on the actual vacuum valve itself, would cause the vacuum pumps to run continuously and be pulling vacuum. Now, if the valve fails and it won't fire and it won't evacuate that pit, it'll get an alarm, a high level, and that pit's only going to get up to wherever it gets up. So as long as you're flushing the toilet, it'll end up overflowing wherever the gravity.
It'll go in the street.
It'll go on the ground around the.
Right. Okay. Because it's lower than my house.
Lower than my house.
All right.
So it is not a, there's no pressure going back the other way.
I see.
It's negative, it's negative pressure on the system. It would be whatever's in yours, yours and your neighbor is all that's going to be.
It's all that's going to be filling it up and maybe backing it up until it reaches.
Until somebody from the, until the department come fix it.
Right. So is there a residual odor coming out of this tank on every other house coming out? Essentially, we got a big tank full of sewage in front of every single buddy's house. Sounds kind of stinky to me. How's that work?
Each of those individual pits, every time it fires, it's going to evacuate everything in the pit.
How many gallons are going to be in the pit before it fires?
Each of those pits is about, I don't want to speak to that exactly. No, it's not fifty. It's, it's about twelve.
Twelve gallons.
About twelve gallons.
So twelve gallons of sewage in everybody's house.
Right. No one fires. So what, I guess theoretically, if somebody left their house for, you know, quite a long time, and it didn't fire before they left, you know, so.
It could sit there for months.
It could sit there for a while. So, you know, it's, depending on what your experience is, somebody may want to go ahead and flush their toilet a couple times before they leave on vacation.
Yeah. Well, good point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Larry.
Can you put a flame over the thing to burn it? Larry Hall, one nine one Randall Avenue, Oak Hill. About the roads, can you look at the engineer drawings with the strict guidelines, what the finished elevation of the road is when they get through? Is it smooth or has it got divots?
Supposed to be smooth.
Our engineer draws strict guidelines.
So now we're getting. There were compacts, and there were compaction and density tests taken at every crossing.
Finished elevation or finished.
There were density tests taken at every crossing.
But engineer draws finished product, smooth road. Okay.
Thank you.
Carrie.
Perhaps, Brad, you could answer this question. Is a citizen connecting to the sewer hookup, are they responsible to dig up the city's property to be able to make that connection? My understanding is, my property, I'm responsible to my property line. Do I? Am I now being responsible to dig up city property to make that connection?
The cleanout point should be right at the property.
Okay.
That little black plastic thing should be pretty much right on the property.
Well, you're not.
I mean, it may be, depending on if there's a tree there or something else, I mean, it may be a foot or two to one way or the other. But generally speaking, those black cleanouts are approximately at the property.
Okay. Per Dennis Fisher, regarding Mr. Peterson's property, Dennis told Mr. Peterson, go from your septic tank out to the road, and then you got to make a sweep and go all the way down across this property, which means he would have to go out and dig up, how many feet, John?
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty feet of city property. That has utility lines in it. To be able to, huh?
Who's Dennis Fisher?
He's our building inspector. So my understanding is, we only go to our city property line, our, our personal property line. And from that point on, it's city's property and should be city's responsibility to make the hookup. Okay. Next statement that I'll make. Ninety percent of the people in this room, and all of the people who are outside probably as well, were completely under the impression that Meaden Huff was the project manager on that whole construction project. And they were, we were all under the impression that Richard and Todd were project manager inspectors, and they were overseeing the project. It wasn't until our last meeting that we had for the change order, that Brad announced that he was not the project manager overseeing the construction, that that was Metro, and that it was Khan's responsibility to be the city's representative to do that. Let's face it, Khan was a city administrator. She was not a construction person, nor should she ever be expected to have been a project manager. It was never her responsibility to be out there, walking down the road, looking and seeing all the pipes to see if it was done. So I just think that was misrepresentation in a way, and a lot of people here are probably kind of surprised to hear it. I was also just asked to say, make a recommendation, Brad, that you go door-to-door in Indian Harbor and survey the people and get a list of the issues and problems that they are having. I know one sixty-one Indian Creek Road was told that they'd have more rock put in the driveway to fix their driveway that they dug up multiple times, putting in tanks, et cetera. Nothing's being done. And maybe it's a suggestion that you or your company contact the residents to see how many other people have issues or things that need to be addressed.
We have a contract with the city of Oak Hill, and if you all want to.
Somebody, somebody needs.
House to house, you can, there's an hourly contract rate. So whatever you want to have done, you can authorize that work for tasks on there.
Somebody needs to represent the citizens of Oak Hill and the people who live in Indian Harbor Estates.
Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Next.
Please come up.
Right, Mr. Two oh six Randall. I was going to answer the one thing about what she was talking about, the property. We own to the road. This is, you know, it's not the city's property. They have an easement there. So that takes care of that situation right there. And then all the check valve, because they want a check valve, they can put their own check valve in, just to be on the safe side if they want to be.
Yeah. So that you want to be able to access it in case it plugs up the toilet.
Right. But I just wanted to say about the property, you know, that's, we own to this road right there.
To the road.
Thank you.
Thank you. From an insurance standpoint, y'all have to check your homeowner's insurance policies. Most, most of the insurance policies have a clause in it that they don't cover backup. So if your policy reads that there's no coverage for sewer backup, then you should consider putting in a check valve. I don't know, after listening to Brad's explanation about how the system operates, that you would need one, but to give you peace of mind, you might want to consider that. They're not that expensive.
They're expensive.
Because they're just one-way valves.
Sir?
Roger Jennings, one eighty-one Randall, has some questions for Mike.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for allowing us to hook up on the new homes. They have a new home. But my question to you is, if we were to hook up ASAP, how would we pay a sewer bill? How would, how would that be calculated from this week on?
Are you, if you're on water.
Yes, we have, we have city water, yes.
So it would be, it would be based on water use, just like.
So.
So once you're, once you're officially on, the sewer will be based on.
Who would we contact?
I can, I'll give you my card and make sure that.
Perfect. That was my next question.
Our customer service, if you're receiving a water bill or you're not.
We are, we are, yes.
Yeah, you can just call the customer service line.
So and they'll attach that, too.
Yeah, however, I, I do believe that, I would like to get your contact information so to make sure that we get.
Sure. That'll mean. The big thing was, I didn't want to have down the road, eight months of sewer, bet.
Yeah, why don't, yeah, why don't you just call me, would you, the social base, we take care of the social base here in people.
Okay, and another question is, the home builder that built our home put in all the lines from the house out to the road. Would we be reimbursed for those lines, the full hookup, or just the hookup from the end of the line to the pot? or just the hookup from the end of the line to the pot?
It'll be the end of the line. And the reason why is because I don't know how you're gonna separate, and I don't know the bill that you've received for it.
Right.
Because, because a plumbing bill, 'cause I used to be in the business, it covers everything inside the house as well as going outside.
Exactly.
You know, so it's hard to separate out from the city's standpoint to try to reimburse you. But from the point that they went out to the bed, yes, that would be reimbursed.
Right, exactly. From the cleanout outside the house, so many feet out.
Yes.
And then we could get reimbursed once there's a breakdown on that four-inch pipe for the cost of installing it, and then also the hookup. Next question is, when they do this final hookup, probably this week, I hope, would somebody want to inspect it? Well, we'll be a licensed plumber through the builder, but does Volusia County need to come out, or Dennis need to come out and take a look at it before it's covered up?
I believe so.
Does the health department or the city?
Whoever signed off on the permit, whoever signs the permit board is gonna be, that would be probably Dennis.
Dennis.
Dennis would just, you know, if he's not available, I'm sure he'll take a picture and...
Well, united, we've got somebody that does inspections when Dennis isn't here.
We have our operations manager, senior, one of the early ones. We wanna have our field operations manager just to ensure quality of the work and everything that, you know, we've got. Our first successful one going. So I think, again, please give me a call and they'll help you arrange for that.
Okay, and I'm Roger Jennings. And I'd like to get you my information.
Sure.
Thank you.
The city needs to be contacted by those that have homes that were just built so that we can get the information to Volusia Utilities so that we can expedite the hookup.
Yeah, thank you.
Those systems that have failed, that...
That lady that, and we normally don't vote on things like this during a workshop, but it's my feeling that the drain feels damaged, her system can't be used, or it can be used, but it's used, they pump out... We need to let her hook back up right away.
Thank you.
I just, that's just my feeling. But we can't vote on it, but we can certainly, I think, do that. I really do. Because I know what it is to have septic pumped out. 'Cause I have an aerobic system, and it ain't cheap.
Mike, what is the system?
You know, you know the procedure. Thank you.
I need my exercise, that's why. When did the system finally pass its final inspection and officially be turned on? Because we were told that it had failed, you know, and the mayor read the letter that Brad had given them back in December on how the system had failed and what was going on. When did it meet its final inspection? And Brad said at the...
Today.
Today. So you had said that AirVAC and Metro had to come up and sign off on all of that. So they've come up and done all of that today?
I have an email, and I copied, might call that email from Metro. Excuse me, from AirVAC. And Metro had a representative there today. And so they went through startup, vacuum hell, everything tested. We have no flash list, we have no walkthrough, and I haven't submitted a substantial completion letter to DEP. But they did today, finally, passed all their tests.
Okay. Because we've been told that this was gonna be maybe March or April before this would happen. So it's amazing that it happened today. Can I step back up to the... And thank you, Mr. Peterson, for...
Well, that's okay. Yes, ma'am?
Peterson, thank you for adding me in on that. Do I have to wait for the vote on that?
No.
No.
Okay.
Make sure that you get the address and everything. Aaron's got it, so we can convey it to the county.
Okay, I have, tomorrow I have Coleman Plumbing coming to give me an estimate from the house to the road. Are they one of the plumbing companies that are okay to do the work?
If they're licensed in Volusia County.
They are, right out of Edgeworth, Florida.
Yep.
Okay.
All you have to do is worry about license and insurance. If they've got workers, got to have work comp.
Okay.
'Cause if some worker gets hurt and they're not on work comp, you're on the hook.
Okay. Well, I'm sure they're a licensed company in Edgeworth.
Yeah.
And they're about the only one around here, besides coming out of Hollygill and stuff in Deltona that can pump stinks right now. 'Cause I went through that. But on the, on the septic that I have there, okay? Yes, I know that you say it's gotta be pumped out, caved in, and caved filled in. Is it, I heard a little bit of difference here on this. They said that you could keep your septic there for 90 days to make sure your system works. Is that true or false?
Haven't got a clue. Up to the health department.
Okay.
That health, that septic abandonment goes through the health department, not the city.
Okay. I know, I was told, one time it was 90, and now it's $50 for the permit through the city.
I know they jumped on me right away.
Right, well, I just would like to be able to take a shower, instead of turning on, get wet, turn it off, soap up, rinse off. That's getting very old. Thank you all.
That's a Navy shower, by the way.
Yeah, it is.
Yes, Paul?
If I heard right, you're done with the streets? But if you, I'm sure all the streets, just like Gary, if you drive down there, you get, every place where they cut across the street, you just bump, bump, bump. Only 21 of them buy out, not that I count. But is somebody gonna do something about that, or is it just tough luck?
I'm gonna look at it, and if they got a mill, what they're gonna wanna do, though, is do an edge mill right over top of that, do a cold patch over top, you know, hot patch over top of the edge mill, and then you're gonna have a hot patch over that edge mill. So they'll do a little strip mill, mill that whole strip, and put asphalt on the strip.
As long as they smooth it out, I don't...
Same, and then it's gonna go from this bump to that bump, and there are density tests. So we had the two technical engineers hired by the contractor did the density, provided the density test. And then they told them a flowable fill, and they took brake cylinders on the flowable fill.
Well, it was good that they brought all that equipment back in a second, third time. The big front load was just putting everything back down again.
My name is Janet Owen. I'm at 216, 216 Indian Creek. And I know you've identified the timeline for the new people to, the new houses to hook up to the system and the people who have had issues with their leach field. But what is the timeline or the process in play for the rest of us to hook up? Is that through the utilities?
Well, we need to get the agreement ironed out with the county Utilities Department on that. The city has to send out a letter to each resident outlining the process to hook up, the outlining of the requirements for the reimbursement of cost. And timeline? Where's our attorney? We're waiting on an attorney. Mr. Simpson? The paperwork with the county? Give me an estimate timewise on your portion of it. Is the county gonna draw it up and then you're gonna review it?
They drafted it sent to me. I forwarded it to Jerome. I'll get your comments back to the county as soon as I get all the comments from everybody, and we'll go back. It's basically drafted. It just needs to go through the approval process.
A week, 10 days?
As soon as I get the comments back.
Okay. Soon as the county gets it. And that's back to legal in the county, right? Mike?
So we should look for the letter from the...
Yeah, well, again, notice of availability would be ordered by the city, I understand. And as far as, again, if anybody has better comment than this, but I don't see why you would want the plumbing company to...
I have.
All the, everything is there.
I have done that. I just wonder...
Yeah, and so the formal portion is to just, again, ensure that the city pays, I'm sorry, the county pays the city's debt, that the project is completed, you know, substantially complete. And these are, these are some of the things. But as I said, working in good faith with folks that have very extreme conditions.
Right, I know.
But yeah, and we, and of course, the incentive base will begin at the point, you know, our incentive will begin at the point in which we execute the contract.
And that's the waiver of the $3,400?
That's correct.
Impact fee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Comments, questions?
Hello, my name's Casey. I live on Gary. And I had a couple questions. I'm somewhat familiar with vacuum systems. Maybe not on land, but many ships use them. And even though the tank is low, it does back up and come up through vents and through shower drains. The, are there, and vacuum systems tend to, I guess, no. My question is, do they clog easier? Or what mechanism at that tank? Can people flush their Q-tips, you know, down the toilet, and we're all gonna be just fine? Or in...
I will tell you that any, people should not be putting down flushables.
Right.
They should not be putting down stringy materials. They should not be putting anything in the toilet other than toilet paper, that is paper, toilet paper, and everything else. So they are, they will clog. I mean, if you start putting tons of what they call quote flushable wipes in our flushable, it can potentially plug any kind of system. But, and there is a vent on the system, and the idea, you know, suggestion to put a check valve, you know, it's not gonna hurt anything as long as you can get to it and maintain it. Cleanout cover on it. But it would go out through the vent, essentially.
Right, so where's the first vent? It's at the tank?
The vent, is it the stamp like right there? The brown looking thing? That's a vent.
No. Where it all goes to that, where the pump room, the lift station?
Pump station is what I showed on the picture at the corner.
Right.
That's the pump station. So the vent from each pit is the actual brown little stamp like.
Yes, sir, I understand that. When the sewage is at the lift station, the pump station, the picture you showed us.
Yes.
Where is the, that tank has a vent, correct?
That tank is under vacuum.
Right, but...
In that tank, what happens is, the vacuum pumps pull. The discharge from the vacuum pumps go into the odor control vent.
So the first vent to that tank is where?
Everything from the 5,000 gallon tank to the valve on top of the back pit is under vacuum. The back pit itself is a gravity pit. And the vent from that gravity pit is in the yard.
Okay. And then, so do residents need to be more careful than with a different system about flushing things down the toilet, clogging the system?
I would suggest that everybody should use only toilet paper and what you, anything comes out of you.
Right. So it sounds like the system clogs easy.
There is, I mean, when we were going through this, there's videos that are passing entire diapers. I mean, there's videos in actual situations where they put full-on diapers into the pits, and it will pass them. But how long it will, and for how long it's gonna do it, and what, where terror's gonna place on the item? No gravity system. And what happens is, when people go out and flush themselves, it may not touch the door, but it shows up in the lift station. And then the lift station mechanics have to pull these pumps out and cut acres and acres of material off these things.
Right, and that's what we can expect, probably.
What I'm saying is, as a general rule, if it becomes, I mean, people should not put anything other than paper into a sewer system.
Right, okay. The, so it sounds like it clogs easier than other systems.
It is not a gravity system, and it does have potential to clog, all right? Just so you know that.
If you have a 25 or 30-year-old home, you can also have the same type of problem. So it's not, you know, again, you should never use your toilet as a garbage can.
Right.
So, you know, and that's, that's just, you know...
I was just anticipating what we can see for the future, and that is very important information. Be careful what you flush down the toilet, right? Mike, my last question was for you. You said something that caught my ear. That pump station is scheduled for advanced wastewater treatment in the future.
The treatment plant.
Oh, somewhere else?
Beacon Light Road.
Okay. So from that area, it goes to where they would expand? 'Cause advanced...
Wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
That's Beacon Light Road.
Okay. And that, that's where they, 'cause that means filter, the sewage, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So that area, where the station's at, is that going to expand?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I guess we ought to do those notices to all the residents, what you can and cannot.
I think that's an excellent idea. A reminder to everybody. Because, well, quite frankly, nobody's had a sanitary sewer system in the community anyways. So I think it's an excellent point, and I believe that, yeah.
'Cause on the, they were, it was a nightmare on the ships if people didn't follow the rules, basically. 'Cause, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioners? Darrell Weisenstein. What about garbage disposals? Nobody has them now, but everybody wants one. Now, how's your system going to react?
Garbage disposal, if it makes it down, garbage disposal makes it through a P-trap, it'll go through the access.
Okay. Great. State your name and address, please.
Chris Harris, 148 Randall. Quick question. I know it was brought up, but I didn't hear the resolution. I saw a corner of my driveway missing. They tried to patch with some glorified concrete patching. They came out, looked at it, called me, said they were gonna fix it. Six months ago.
They sent an email to Jerome.
I already have a whole email just during, too. I might as well just bring it back up. Another one, just a thing for consideration. I was one of the people that ended up with unlucky with the lift or the yard tank on the other side of my driveway. A good distance from my house. I know it came out the engineering outlet, but in my opinion, the plumbers are gonna learn what you guys are gonna fund up to, whether it's $2,100, whatever. And that's gonna be the minimum price. But if that information doesn't spread and people are getting reimbursed $900, is that gonna be factored for others that finds on the other side 30 feet of driveway? And then 50 feet back to my house to hook into the system? And I have a septic tank, an existing septic tank and drain field in that path, and my water and electric.
Reimbursement amount will be a fixed amount. No matter if you pay $800, you'll get reimbursed $800. If you pay $5,000, and all we've got is $2,000, and that's what you're gonna get reimbursed.
Okay, so that, the person that's spending $800, their $1,300's not gonna stay in the pot to factor for...
They're not gonna make any money off of it.
No, I hear ya. But for me, I'm on the wrong side of whoever engineered this mess. And I engineer things for a living, so it's like... And I call them, they make excuses and whatnot, but how did I luck out, rolled the dice, and somebody else didn't? And then I, I get the $5,000 bill for a driveway and $100 feet of pipe. My neighbor back there, who's gonna get it? Or, who knows? I mean, it's something to factor, in my opinion, that if somebody charged or claims 800 and there's an excess pot, maybe factor for those of us that didn't plan to be on the wrong side of the engineering.
That's why I made the comment at a commission meeting, do not tell these plumbers that you're being reimbursed. Don't settle on just one estimate of what it's going to cost. Do it like it's your money, because in a lot of cases, it's going to be your money. Because what the city's going to, hopefully we can provide enough, but it, it, we got to go back and, and ask DEP if we can change the way that grant was worded and use it to hook up. I don't, we're dealing with a government agency, so if we ask today, I can't give you a timeline when they respond. It was unfortunate that we lost the $400,000 grant, but that's the way it goes with grants, there's no guarantees. Hopefully, I know all of us, I'll speak for all of us, we hope we can find extra funding, because that area with all of the concrete driveways, I knew the pipes were going to have to go under those concrete driveways. I knew there was drain fields under those things. I kind of thought there was tanks under the homes, so that's an issue that we've got to address. The city administrator and I will get on that as quickly as possible with the health department to see, because of the situation, that it doesn't have to be condemned in the normal procedure way to, because, I mean, you're not going to move a double-wide trailer, you know, I mean, it's just, in my past life, I used to set up trailers, manufactured homes. And it's an expense that nowadays is not cheap, you know, in my day it was cheap. So I, I wish, I wish we could tell you that, that we had extra funding, that's going to come in the next week or two, hopefully.
Thank you.
Do I have to get back up to the podium?
Yes, you do. I want you to make sure to get your exercise.
I already did my workout for somebody.
Well, that's okay.
You got your extra 10 steps.
This $400,000 that you say you didn't, lost and didn't get, was that the money that Con had confirmed that she had secured?
I don't know what...
Because she was talking about 300.
Carrie, we asked that question every commission meeting.
I know.
I wasn't there, she didn't share.
Okay.
So I don't know...
But we're saying this 400, is that the same money?
And it started out, your comment was 300,000.
Correct. That's what Con told us.
Well...
And, and this is the money that Brad told Mark and Joe and John Peterson was money that the city had and was in an account, so I'm just, I'm wondering.
There's money in the general fund.
Well, we all know that.
Okay, and that has to be the funds they're talking about.
Okay, if you say so. Where was this 400,000, so when was that applied for, or was that requested to...
Brad who?
That money was a 319H grant, it's called non-point source, and non-point source is one of the few DEP programs that are not legislative appropriations that can go directly to homeowners.
Correct.
We applied for that in...
Con applied for that, I have a copy of that application.
Well, she signed it, but our grant person filled out the application.
Right.
And memory serves me correct, that got submitted in April timeframe of '23, and the DEP came down with their non-point source list probably in November, and we found out in November that we didn't make that list. The scuttlebutt was that they got so much other money from all these other sources that they're trying to sprinkle it out to other folks who didn't get anything, but fact of the matter is it just didn't hit.
So that was the nine, the non-point...
That was the non-point source, that's 319H grant.
That was a matching fund of 280 and 280.
Nope, no, the 319H is a straight-up grant, y'all have a copy of it in your file somewhere.
Okay.
And that was the one that was submitted to that program.
Okay, because I don't have a copy of that, and Jerome just had sent me everything, so that's why I questioned it.
No, I can't find a copy, I'll send you a copy.
Thank you, Carrie. Commissioners?
John has a question.
Quick question, please. Yes, sir. I missed the very beginning of, I missed the very beginning, my name is John Sincaavage, and I'm at 230 Gary Avenue, and I missed the very beginning of it, but I don't know if it was covered or not, but there's a lot of people out here that are hooked up. Is there a list or some kind of thing where we could get a possible group discount, or is it a list of plumbers that we can en masse, you know, maybe get a master, or some way to where we can get a little competitive price?
We were advised by the city attorney not to do that. And the reason why, if whoever we give and you use, and they cause a problem, city gets sued, just the fact of life.
Yeah, I was just trying to see if there might be, you know, with...
See, I made the suggestion that we get two or three and get bids to do the whole project, and city attorney said, whoop, you're accepting too much liability by doing that, so...
Okay, I just wrote, they threw out, they threw out an offer en masse, you know, just to try and get, you know, thousands of people.
That's why I say get, get more than just one plumber to give you a bid, at, you know, because it's your money, and we're going to try to reimburse you as much as we can with what we've got, you know, but just think about it like it's your money.
Well, it is, definitely, you know, it's everybody's money, so I'm thinking there's a safety in numbers, so if we could get a, you know, a, a, maybe like 10 people to use it, where we could offer a, a, a discount.
Your, your neighbors, get your neighbors together and tell the plumber, I got five people.
What can you do for us?
What can you do for us? You know, I mean, to me, that would be the way to do it. If I was in the neighborhood, I'd try to get as many. I'll give you an example, my neighbors and I, when the water was put in Down River Road, there was no fire hydrant. There was one down at the end, down near the Seminole Rest. Being in the insurance business, I knew if I had water within 1,000 feet, my protection class would drop from nine to four, that means my insurance rate would drop, so me and my three property owners split the cost of $2,400 and put in a fire hydrant. My insurance rate dropped $1,000. I got the city to agree to put fire hydrants in Indian Arbor Estates, so that y'all's insurance rates should go down.
Well, thank you very much, because my insurance is within one mile of the, of the fire hydrant, so that made a lot of difference in my homeowners.
Yes, yeah, it does.
But I was just curious if there might be a group discount, or just the, just the people that put a, put a bid or put a thing out to where, hey, you want to do this and we can get you, you know...
Yeah, just talk to your neighbors and see if they would like to do that, because it may work out in your favor, in getting a lower rate than, you know, doing it by yourself with whatever plumber you choose.
Yeah, I got five I want to talk to right now, but I can't talk to the whole rest of the road because there are a bunch of changes, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, commissioners, I'll start with you.
Nothing.
Commissioner Height?
Nothing.
Commissioner Joe? Steve?
Nothing.
Vice Mayor?
I think we've covered all the bases.
As much as possible. Anybody that has a new home, make sure they reach out to Aaron, give the information so that they can get on the list to be hooked up. And I think we need a motion...
You need the motion to adjourn?
To adjourn. We have a motion?
Mm-hmm.
A second?
We have a second. Meeting's adjourned, thank you, everybody.